Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of December the 8th, 2014. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Order of Business of Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Please spell your name for us. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all of the hearings, the council will vote on resolutions on items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Tonight, we are going to start with a Board of Equalization meeting. That's a little something different, so bear with us. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the open meeting law is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. Today's districts include the Downtown Business Improvement District, the Downtown Core Business Improvement District Overlay, the Downtown Maintenance Improvement District, the West Hay Market Downtown Maintenance Business Improvement District, the West Hay Market Downtown Management Business Improvement District, and the West Hay Market Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, whose land is benefited by the proposed improvement. These districts encompass the management activities performed through and contracted by the Downtown Lincoln Association. Once those projects have been completed, the cost is paid by the city through its special assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup the cost from the benefited property owners and reimburse its revolving fund. Those cost assessments are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to the city council for its review when sitting as the Board of Equalization, as we are now. The clerk will read each district individually from the printed agenda. After the districts read are presented from the Urban Development Department will come forward and make a brief statement about the district. About the district. After that, anyone wishing to make a statement may come forward. Please state your name, address before making any comments.
All right, our first order of business is to elect a chair.
I move that Doug Emery be chair.
Moved and seconded.
That's right here, second.
Discussion, caller all.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. I'll read items three through eight into the record. We have the Downtown Business Improvement District generally bounded by H., Sixth, R., and Seventeenth Streets; Core Business Improvement District Overlay generally bounded by Centennial Mall, M., Ninth, and Q Streets; Downtown Maintenance District generally extending from Seventh Street on the west to Seventeenth Street on the east, and from R. Street on the north to M. Street on the south, and shall in addition thereto include the properties abutting on the west side of Seventh Street from N. Street to R. Street; the properties abutting on the east side of Seventeenth Street from Q. Street to M. Street; the properties abutting on the north side of R. Street from Seventh Street to Tenth Street; and the properties abutting the south side of M. Street from Eighth Street to Seventeenth Street. In addition, the district shall include properties abutting both sides of Thirteenth Street from M. Street to Lincoln Mall and all of Cornhusker Square. Item six, West Hay Market Downtown Maintenance Business Improvement District generally bounded by the west line of Outlet C., West Hay Market Edition from approximately K. Street on the south, north to N. Street, and continuing north along the center line of Pinnacle Arena Drive to approximately Ninth and Tenth Streets, thence south to R. Street, thence west to Seventh Street, thence south to O. Street, thence east to Eighth Street, thence south to the alley south of N. Street, thence west to the east line of Outlet C., West Hay Market Edition. Item seven, West Hay Market Downtown Management Business Improvement District generally bounded by Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west and north, North Tenth Street on the east, and Q., R., and N. Streets on the south. Item eight is the West Hay Market Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District Overlay generally bounded by Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west and north, North Eighth and North Ninth Streets on the east, and O. and N. Streets on the south.
My name is Ron Kane. I'm with the Urban Development Department, and I am the staff person who prepared the proposed distribution of assessments before you today. The three downtown districts, the time period being assessed is September 1st of 2013 through August 31st of 2014. And the three West Hay Market districts, this will be the first assessment on these districts, and it represents a partial year assessment since the ordinances were just passed by council at the end of January of this year. And I'm here to try and answer any questions you may have regarding the proposed assessments.
John.
Mr. Kane, you don't happen to have an overlay that would just show geographically what our clerk just read, just to help the public understand in case there's misunderstandings?
I would, yeah. I'd have to go back to my office to grab the maps that would've been attached with the resolutions.
I don't know if anyone here from downtown Lincoln has a map or something, but it could be real beneficial just to show so that people know, or businesses know where they're located.
Okay, because on the notices that would've went out, it does have a copy of the map on the back of the assessments to show the district boundaries.
Any other questions? None. Okay. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Caller all.
All right, if not, we can go into the voting session then. I would take motions. All six districts.
So moved. Moved by Roy and seconded by Larian. Discussion. Caller all.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Now we could have a motion to adjourn, sign, e, die.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Caller all.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Onto the regular meeting, please.
All right. Just a reminder, there will be no city council meetings the weeks of December 22nd and December 29th due to the holidays. Public hearing consent agenda are items one through 10. Does anyone wish to come forward for the consent agenda?
Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Please.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two was introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
By Roy. Discussion. Caller all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item three was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion. Caller all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call item 11, application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store 2970 to expand its Class C liquor license to include an area measuring approximately 22 feet by 28 feet to the north on property generally located at 2500 Northwest 12th Street. Do you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Kreitz. Last name is spelled C.R.I.T.E.S. Address 2111 Southwest 18th Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm the district manager for Casey's General Stores.
You want to explain the request?
Yes, yes. What it is, is we have added a kitchen onto this location, and part of the addition also houses a cooler and freezer for the kitchen as well as backroom storage for the kitchen items as well.
Okay. Questions? All right. Thank you very much. I should give you a chance. I give everybody else a chance. Do you want to do it? You have a public service announcement for Casey's?
I mean, our pizza?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
I think Investigator Schaefer has comment.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, yes. I mean, which one? Casey's? Your cases? Okay. Okay. Do you want to address? All right, yeah. Hello. The...
You have to identify yourself first.
Conan Schaefer, investigator with the Lincoln Police Department.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The Casey's General Stores expanding area, and there was some little bit of confusion. Apparently, they had a previous special permit with the city, I believe, with planning, and one of the stipulations was that they amend that special permit to encompass the additional area for their liquor license expansion. And I spoke with them today, and there was some confusion about whether or not they're actually using that expanded area for the liquor or not. I'm not sure where we were on that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I can actually answer that question. So, no, we won't be using the expanded area that is specifically for the kitchen items and maybe some grocery items such as chips or something like that, but all of our liquor is actually housed in the manager's office, which is part of the existing. It doesn't have anything to do with the addition, aside from the liquor cabinets that are on the sales floor, and then any beer is actually housed in our beer cave and beer cooler.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just so it's noted, that was added, I think, yet today, that the applicants obtain a valid amended special permit for the expanded area?
Okay. Jonathan?
Well, okay, so we are asking that they get an amendment to the special permit regardless.
Yes, sir.
So, because our normal procedure would be that the building as a whole be under the liquor permit, not just the portion where the beer is sold.
Correct.
So, otherwise, you could just have it be the refrigerators and the cash register on the way out.
Exactly.
Okay. So, the expectation is, it hasn't gone to Planning Commission yet, and that will just be something that until that special permit is approved through Planning Commission, this would not take effect.
That's correct.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call items 12 and 13 together. They're the application of Holt Enterprises doing business as Paul's Pub for a Class C liquor license at 5250 Cornhusker Highway and the related manager application of Paul Holt. Do you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name's Paul Holt. I live at 1659 12th Avenue, Columbus, Nebraska. The address of the business is 5250 Cornhusker Highway, Lincoln, Nebraska. I own the Oasis Inn and Suites, and previously Lucky's owned the bar, and so I bought them out at the beginning of November, and we intend to run it as a pizza and burger joint and, of course, have alcohol available for the guests.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Come fry our pizza.
There you go. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, we can vote on these items.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of all three items.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion. Caller all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Public hearing ordinance is second reading. Item 14 is approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Anderson Homes, authorizing the sale of four lots of city-owned surplus property generally located at 2601, 2531, 2521, and 2511 Northwest 52nd Street.
Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. These four lots have been previously surplus, and they're ready to be sold. We have a buyer. The buyer is Anderson Homes. We have six lots that we put on the market, and in fact, we've been in the ownership of them for a rather long time. We put on the market a while ago. The first two sold to Habitat for Humanity. One already has a house, the other one has a foundation. These are the four lots to the north. They will eventually be single-family homes, and using a figure of $150,000 of valuation, a pretty common number, that would make six houses at 150,000, about $900,000 of valuation total for the tax base, and the purchase price in this case is $70,000.
Any questions? Jonathan?
This map looks vaguely familiar from years ago. Is that true?
It is true. And in fact, there was once, at one point, a potential sale of a number of these lots, but it languished in council pending for about a year, and the eventual offer went away. We're thinking that we're going to cross the finish line today, but that's just the betting.
We don't know for sure.
Since it lies in your purview.
Well, Trent does not like pending, so we might avoid that.
We might have action.
I'm not making any pending motions, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
I'll call item 15, text amendment 14015, repealing section 2767075 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parking in the Capitol Environments District to allow the parking in the Capitol Environments District to be determined by the underlying zoning district.
Ed Zimmerman, Planning Department. This item came to us in association with Century House, although it's broader in its recommendation to the moment. Century House is in O-1 zoning. O-1 zoning requires .5 parking stalls per dwelling unit. Century House is also in Capitol Environments District, which extends all the way from University on the north to Washington Street on the south, along the 15th Street Line, Centennial Mall and Goodye Boulevard, and from Fifth Street on the west to Lincoln High on the east. And a separate section of the code, the one addressed here, says that everything within Capitol Environments District must have two parking stalls per dwelling unit. If you've looked at the map accompanying this recommendation, many different zoning districts fall under Capitol Environments, and it seemed both improper for the application before us of Century House, that simply wanted to convert a floor that had been apartments back into apartments and has ample parking under the O-1, but cannot meet the Capitol Environments requirement. It seems far better to let all of these districts be governed by their underlying zoning, so we weren't treating B-4 at the heart of downtown like R-6 in their south or Capitol View to the east. And so, our recommendation, we've taken it through Preservation Commission, through Capitol Environments Commission, and through Planning Commission, is we simply strike that section, let the underlying district govern the parking within the specific sub-districts of Capitol Environments, and allow a good project in Century House to proceed. So that's the recommendation that comes to you, and I don't make pizza, but I can do a pretty good calzone.
Very good. Jonathan?
Well, whenever everyone agrees that whatever our rule is, is not a good one, I always wondered how it got there in the first place.
And I look back at that. There were numerous zoning, parking changes made in 96, and I think overall, the intent was to increase the requirements throughout many zoning districts of the city. But the only discussion I could find of this particular provision, which was going to quadruple the required zoning in the O-1, was that Capitol Environments is special, and a subset of the piece we're looking at says that you could reduce it from two to one. Well, that would still be double in O-1. I found no discussion at all of the O-1 circumstance, which is either doubling or quadrupling, but that if council chose to go from two back down to one, that might be acceptable under certain circumstances. I couldn't find any discussion of this blanket, and no discussion of B-4, which would have no underlying, in B-4 around Centennial Mall, would have no underlying parking requirement except for, under this, two per dwelling unit. So it did not seem to get a close focus, except in this, if it went up to two, it could go back down to one, or from zero to two or one in the B-4.
And you've dealt with Capitol Environments issues for a long time. Has parking been one that's been an issue?
I think certainly, and when the legislature is in session, parking around the Capitol can be very, very tight, particularly during the days they're in session. And Capitol Environments District, Capitol Environments Commission often discusses, they would love to have a conversation with the state about the state's overall parking needs and plans around the Capitol, but to apply this standard everywhere within Capitol Environments District does not seem a good provision. I do have one photo on my iPhone of two smart cars in one stall at Pioneer House, which is the picture of what a .5 parking requirement looks like. That would be the .5.
Thanks.
Any other question? Larian?
Ed, would you put this in the category of what the Planning Department has been trying to do in general through the most recent comp plan update, to remove some of the barriers to redevelopment in the core of our city by looking at instances where parking might be more flexible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 16, text amendment 14016, amending section 2762140 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the heavy commercial services use group to allow mini warehouses as a conditional use in the B-5 Planned Regional Business District.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, Derek Zimmerman with the Baylor Evan Law Firm, 1248 O. Street, Suite 600, Lincoln, Nebraska. And we're here today on a proposed text amendment to allow mini warehouses as a conditional use in the B-5 Planned Regional Business District. And the B-5 district is a use permit district that requires submission of plans to the city staff for review on a case-by-case basis and for approval. There are currently seven B-5 districts in Lincoln. They're all large-scale, you would say shopping centers, but there's also some office and accessory uses, but places like Gateway, South Point, Edgewood, those are the types of B-5 districts that we're talking about with this text amendment. And the project that kind of started this whole process is an office building which is just off of North Cotner, out at the Gateway Shopping Center. And the property we're talking about is right here. It's an existing office building, and then this is a photograph of the building as it exists today, with the exception of there's cars in this picture, and this is currently a vacant building. It has been on the market for some time, and it was historically an office building, and there just has not been any interest. And so, to try to come up with a good potential use for the property, mini warehouses came up as a possibility. And many of the B-5 districts are older. It's getting to the point where we're talking about buildings and properties needing to be reused for various purposes, and I believe the staff report identifies that mini warehouses' storage areas have, in other zoning districts, have come before the council within the past couple of years to try to add that use as allowed in certain zoning districts. And so, this just follows from that. And it's a nice compatible use for this type of zoning district because it's low traffic, and it's not a heavy-impact use. And in addition, it also allows for the fact that there is the 100-foot setback when it's abutting residential districts, and so you already have that buffer should, in fact, the proposed warehouse or mini warehouse, mini storage units be proposed in an area that would be in the range of, or closer on the residential side. There are three conditions that are proposed with the text change. Essentially, there's going to be a site plan submitted for review and approval by the city staff. There is not allowed to be any accessory open storage or outdoor vehicle storage, and it also has to comply with conditions of approval, basically protecting health, safety, general welfare. So those will be the checks and balances for each process as each application is filed. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jonathan?
So this is indoor storage? Will the building look the same? You're getting rid of, what's changing here?
The site plan isn't finalized, but essentially, yes, it will be indoor storage. This is not, we're not going to be taking down the building and having an outdoor storage area. We're not, when people think of, I mean, it's mini warehouses, you think of the traditional type uses, and it's not going to be like that. I believe this is going to be indoor storage.
Okay, so the building will look roughly the same, so for people who live around it, they won't notice a lot of change?
The only change could be if there's additional cars in the area that aren't there now. I mean, I believe that would be about it.
There's no cars there now.
Correct.
And the only residential is across the other side of Cotner. It's Gateway to the south, so.
Yes, the only residential is off to the...
The parking lot from?
This is R-6 Residential. I actually did a rough measurement, building to building, closest one's about there, you're about 190 feet.
You have a parking garage to the south, then you have a, or the south, then maybe a lily's right, and then a doctor's building to the...
That's correct.
Well, it just seems odd to me that one would use valuable B-5 property as mini warehouse storage, but I guess if that's what the market is asking for in this circumstance, it doesn't necessarily negatively affect the other businesses. It's not something I would see as...
And the only residential is across the other side of, of Cotner. It's Gateway to the south, so.
Yes, the, the, the only residential is, is off to the...
The parking lot from?
The, this is, this is R6 Residential. I actually did the, a rough measurement, building to building, closest one's about there, you're about 190 feet.
You have a parking garage to the, to the south, then you have a, or, or the, yeah, south, then maybe Lillies, right?
That's correct.
And then a doctor's building to the...
Yep. That's correct.
Well, it just seems odd to me that one would use valuable B5 property as mini warehouse storage. But I guess if that's what the market is asking for in this circumstance, it doesn't necessarily negatively affect the other businesses. It's not something I would see us, when we zone something as B5, as thinking that's the kind of development we would see, though.
Maybe for smaller areas within a B5, if you have a little strip of an area that you want to use. Not, not in this sense. If, if there was a new project that came before the council, I, I don't imagine that a property like this one would be, of this scale, would be proposed for indoor storage. But there is value in, in having climate-controlled indoor storage as well. And so I think that was an opportunity they were looking to pursue.
And, and because all the setbacks are the same, nothing's changing there. If you ever converted it back to other uses, that it would still conform and...
Correct. I think, yeah, that the, the building footprint doesn't change in this instance. I suppose there are situations where it could, but the setbacks are still in place. And, and you would still have to, I believe, go in front, you'd have to file an application to amend your use permit with the planning department. So there would be a review process there to make sure that everything complies.
Thank you.
Any other, Carl?
Yeah, thanks. So, so is this build, the current building, is that going to be reused for this purpose, or will there be a new building?
I believe the building's going to be reused for this purpose.
Okay. And the, some indoor storage facilities, you actually go indoors to have access to those rooms or storage places, is, is that the way this will work, or will there be exterior?
I believe it's the former. I don't want to go too far, because I haven't seen the final site plan yet, but I believe it's the former. That's the plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 17, amending the chapter title of Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 2.28, as Human Resources Department, and amending sections 2.28.010, 228020, and 228030 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to redesignate the Personnel Department as their Human Resources Department, and the Personnel Director as the Human Resources Director.
Look, Jeff Kirkpatrick, Lincoln City Attorney. This is strictly code cleanup. As you probably all recall, this change was made some time ago to change the Personnel Department to the Human Resources Department, Personnel Director to the Human Resources Director. I think the people in the Human Resources, as well as my department, thought we had made all of the necessary changes in the code. Somehow this one slipped through, so when we noticed it, we thought we'd come back as part of the annual code cleanup and make this change.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Any questions? Any questions from the public? Staff questions? Next item, please.
I'll call item 18, repealing Chapter 5.44 of the Lincoln Municipal Code, Sidewalk Snow Removal and Cleaning Businesses relating to permits for operating motor-powered snow removal or sidewalk cleaning equipment on sidewalks within the city.
Again, Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. This is part of the, the annual code cleanup as well. This one is somewhat different in that we're changing it, not because we're renaming it, but we're removing something frankly we haven't done in some time. And so when you have a portion of your code that you haven't been enforcing, in this case permitting commercial businesses that, that do snow removal, including on city sidewalks, you have a choice. You can either start enforcing it, or you can take it out of the code. And there didn't seem to be a strong reason to start enforcing this all of a sudden in issuing these permits. So we're asking the council to consider removing this from the code.
Carl?
Yeah, thank you. I, I don't know, Jeff, if you know the history of, of why this was put in. Maybe some of my colleagues here have a recollection as to why we would have been trying to regulate this.
I think this goes back beyond anybody's memory here. I think it passed...
Even John Camp, no.
Well, there was dirt, there was snow.
This is something that was charged to City Clerk's office. And in the 23 years that I've been with City Clerk, we have never issued a, a permit on it. So we felt it was time to remove it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anybody who'd like to questions? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, Public Hearing Resolutions, item 19, Comp Plan Conformance 14022, approving an amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to add the 23rd and O Street Project to rehabilitate and expand an existing retail building for a health clinic on approximately two acres of property generally located at 2301 O Street and the adjacent Wright's Way.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, Derek Zimmerman with the Baylor Evans Law Firm. And I submitted a formal letter request last week, but it was after the agenda was released. And so I decided I would come here today and formally request a deferral of this item. And the reason being is that we are still negotiating with the tenant to finalize plans, and we really believe that'll happen by the time the public hearing is next week. I know the redevelopment plan isn't necessarily the only time to discuss the details of our proposed development, but enough to the point that we really want to have the plans in place with the tenant before we come before the council to discuss it. So we would request a one-week deferral.
Okay, you want one-week deferral with public hearing?
Yes, that's...
Okay. And we're, we will probably go ahead, Derek, and allow public hearing today in case somebody's here didn't know about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a point for Mr. Eskridge, too. This came after snow, and I used to clean the Safeway store when I was in high school. Actually, I cleaned the bakery.
I don't believe it's going to be a grocery store again.
No.
Somebody want to make a move? Should we make a motion?
Move the delay action until, end public hearing until December 15.
Second.
Seconded by Larian. Discussion, that will be with a public hearing.
That's right.
Okay. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item today? You're welcome to, since it was on the agenda. Singing, what's color?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Items 20, 21, and 22, Comp Plan Amendment 14005, Application of the Planning Director to amend the 2040 Comp Plan to add the South Salt Creek Watershed Master Plan. Comp Plan Amendment 14006, Application of the Planning Director to amend the 2040 Comp Plan to add the Haynes Branch Watershed Master Plan. And item 22 is Comp Plan Amendment 14007, Application of the Planning Director to amend the 2040 Comp Plan to add the Middle Creek Watershed Master Plan.
Jared Nelson with City of Lincoln Watershed Management and Public Works. Good afternoon. I'm going to give a brief explanation of what's before you here. We have three watershed master plans that all, talk about all three of them collectively. And this is to be considered to adopt as part of the comp plan, as a list of subarea plans, and also for watershed master plans. This is a continuation, I have a map here.
Bring it up.
This is a continuation of efforts that we've been doing for the past decade or so. We've done watershed master plans in many of the other watersheds in Lincoln. This map shows in green the watersheds that have been completed, starting with Beel Slough back in 2000, and progressing with Stevens Creek, Salt Creek. And now we have these three in front of you, Middle Creek, Haynes Branch, and South Salt Creek. And with these three watersheds, we, just to give you some background, we did clip the study boundaries off at the three-mile jurisdiction, just because some of the watersheds continue clear out into the other counties even, Saline and Seward County. So we, we clipped it off at the ETJ to focus on what's primarily going to be developed. And with that, we, the, the goal is to finish doing watershed master planning for the entire city of Lincoln. And with the actual project, with the master plan, what we're, what we had our consultant do is go through and walk the streams and do an assessment, is primarily focusing on stream bank stability, the, the condition of the channels, and, you know, how they are, if there's any projects that they could come up with to add to our CIP list. And so that's kind of the, I guess the ultimate goal here is to get CIP projects out of these master plans, to add to our collective list of, of CIP projects. This, this effort was a, a joint effort between the city, the Lower Platte South NRD, and Lancaster County also was involved. The funding was shared between the City of Lincoln and the Lower Platte South NRD. And with that in mind, the capital improvement projects that come out of these, which I'll go into later, they are also funded primarily between the City of Lincoln with our stormwater bond, and also with the Lower Platte South NRD. So to, I guess, we, we did have a fairly extensive public outreach. We sent out three newsletters. We did, we sent out mailings to everyone that lived along the channel, you know, the different business organizations and interested parties. We had two open houses that were fairly well-attended, and, yeah, so we had, we had a, we tried to get as much public input and involvement as we could, including this meeting right now. And with the, with the consultant out in the field walking the streams, that was very helpful. I mean, boots on the grounds, out in the field, they're walking the streams. They walked over 100 miles of stream collectively. And with that, they found that all the projects that were established with this plan were stream bank, stream stability projects. And I have some examples of those. And stream, stream stability projects kind of breaks into bank stabilization projects, grade stabilization, and stilling basin projects. This is an example of a bank stabilization project. This is Van Dorn, we have, oh, Highway 77 over here. And you can see that the stream is starting to erode into the bank sides. You can see the high cliffs of the channel there. And so this is a fairly straightforward project where we stabilize the outer banks to help protect the infrastructure, in this case, a road. So this would be a typical project of bank stabilization. Here's a typical project of bank stilling, or it's, it's really a bank stabilization at the outlet of culverts. So in this case, we have a culvert, and at the downstream end, it erodes, or it creates a hole, it threatens infrastructure. So this would be a project to go in and add rip rock, rip rap, and stabilize that downstream end to protect the culvert and the road. And then here is a example of a project for grade control. And in this, in this case, it's actually a little tributary off of Salt Creek in Wilderness Park. And the tributary is incising, so it's cutting deeper and deeper. And so the project would be to add grade stabilization structures to help stabilize that bank. And in this instance, that would actually help prevent the need for a future bridge someday, you know, on one of the, the trails in Wilderness Park. So that, that's an example of a grade, grade control project. I do have a summary of the CIP projects that were identified with Haynes Branch Watershed. There were 10 CIP projects. Again, they're all stream stability projects. And here is a breakdown. All these projects were prioritized, prioritized using our same methodology that we've used in the other master plans. So we have kind of a collective list of all of our CIP projects from the master plan, and they're all ranked using the same scoring system. And then we also, our consultant put together an estimate of the project cost. And so here are the 10 projects with their priority score and their project ranking, and then the, the project cost. They're totaling $2.3 million. For Middle Creek, there were seven stream bank stability projects identified. And again, four grade controls, one bank stabilization, stilling basin, and a, some erosion and a pipe outfall. And here is the breakdown for the Middle Creek Watershed Managed Master Plan with the seven projects totaling $1.7 million. And we don't have funding identified in here, but as I said earlier, the funding is generally from the stormwater bonds when they're passed, and also from the Lower Platte South NRD. So when funding is available, we pick out, you know, the highest priority project. And then last, we have Salt Creek, South Salt Creek Watershed, which includes Salt Creek, and then some of these smaller tributaries that drain into Salt Creek. And this watershed is somewhat unique. It actually, we actually included a portion out here that drains into Wagon Train Lake, because that actually continues to drain around, and then through Roca, and then north into Salt Creek. So that was also included. And with this, we have 19 stream stability projects. And again, there is their priority score ranking and the total project cost of $6.7 We also looked in the watershed master plans, we looked at water quality, and we looked at pre-developed hydrology, so trying to get a baseline of what are the runoff rates before those areas are developed, so that when they're developed, we have that baseline that we can control the runoff rates with. So those were the, I mean, that was the meat of the report. I guess I'll ask if you have any questions.
Questions?
How can this work help support the growth and development of the city?
That's a great question. As the city expands and grows, we don't want people to go into an area that's with natural, you know, wildlife, with grasses and trees, where the rainfall, some of it infiltrates. We don't, we wouldn't want it to be developed and have those run, those runoff rates increase. So that's one of the reasons, is, is identifying what those runoff rates are. Another benefit would be to identify the streams and where there's problems, so that we can go in and, and put in these grades control projects and these bank stabilization projects to protect our infrastructure. So if that's not done, those channels and the banks will continue to erode and incise, and then streets and bridges and other infrastructure would start to fail. So this is a proactive approach to get in there and do some of these projects before there's, you know, the problem gets worse. It's, it's cheaper to do these projects now as opposed to later, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Item 23, amending the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards to assure consistency with federal and state air quality regulations.
Good afternoon, Judy Halsted, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. First wanted to comment that I hope all of you have your insomnia cured now with the 90 pages we gave you. I apologize for that, but do want to recognize Scott Holmes and Chris Schroeder for their work. They gave you actually a five-page summary of those 90 pages, and hopefully that was a little easier for council to go through. They are both here, they are our technical experts, and so if you have questions for them. In general, as you saw through your memo, this is really cleanup for us to be consistent with the state regulations and the federal regulations. There are no fee changes as a result of any of these changes. There are no source changes as a result of these changes. And so we are happy to answer any questions that you might have today.
Any questions? Judy, what's, is there adverse effect to businesses here?
We do not have any adverse effect to businesses here.
That's the best news of all time. Okay, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 23. It's a contract agreement between Aging Partners and Phillips Lifeline for monitoring services and equipment purchase for a three-year term, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms.
Good afternoon. I'm June Peterson, Director of Aging Partners, and with me is Carol Meyerhoff, who manages many things, transportation and handyman, and our Lifelines program. And we're only going to take a few minutes, but we couldn't resist the marketing opportunity. We got this wonderful story in the paper this morning that Nancy wrote about our Lifeline program. The request today is for you to approve a contract with a company that we've been working with for four years. The contract would be a three-year contract with two opportunities for growth, or for additional years of service. And Carol can show you one of our new auto alerts, so share that with them.
The new tech, the technology is advancing so rapidly, and Phillips developed what they call a GoSafe mobile personal help button. So with this device, you can go anywhere in the community, and if you... So with this device, you can go anywhere in the community, and if you would sustain a fall or have a medical emergency by pressing the button, which I don't want to do because it, it will, it's wireless, so it will be activated, but you would be in, in touch with the response center at Phillips, which would either get a hold of emergency personnel to assist you or one of your responders to come assist.
Previously, these were available in your home, but if you were in the garden or doing something else outside or at Gateway, you didn't have that protection. So this provides that. Any questions?
So tell us how the program works, Jim.
I think I'd like Carol to do that.
Okay, I apologize.
We're the pioneering agency, and we were the first ones that came on board with a Lifeline service in 1982. So we've been providing this service for over 30 years. The in-home service, you would call our agency and we would get you on board with, with the service, which is a unit and a button similar to this, but like June said, would be used in and around your home. It has a range of about 200 yards. And then you pay a monthly service to us for that, for the monitoring service. And then we also pay Phillips a monitoring fee to provide that resource to us.
So basically, you guys are the intermediary between the customer and Phillips, and, and they pay, the, the customer pays the cost?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking for John because John might need one, you know.
We're also the only provider, because there's many, there's many on the market today, but we're the only ones. Do they always pick on you, John?
Yes.
Well, I'm second only.
But I'm not saying too much myself, so.
But the number is 441-8816.
Now, does it work outside the county?
It's Lincoln and Lancaster County. The GoSafe works wherever you are, where the, wherever there's cell service.
Jonathan, I'll take a card.
So if I go to New York City and there's cell service, it'll work?
Yes.
How about France?
France.
I don't, I'll check on that, John, if you're really interested.
I just got back, so please.
The program is self-supporting. It pays for one personnel to, to serve the program.
And it's the only provider that also offers a financial, like a sliding fee scale or assistance with donations and then funds. Instead of being a for-profit as a business, which there are many on the market, we put that money back in to serve the low income, which is one of our agency's missions.
Very good. Jonathan? Does it provide GPS coordinates or?
There's, there's six technologies that will find you, John, if you need the service. And that does include GPS, Wi-Fi, and what they call intel, intelligent breadcrumbs. So they take snapshots of where you've been so that if you go into, get in trouble, that they can kind of recount your steps to see where you are. It also has an alert beacon that if you are unconscious or in a remote location, it sends out a high-pitched noise that emergency response can find you. And it also has fall alert, so if you are unconscious and fall, it automatically sends that, so you don't have to press the button if, so I don't want to drop it either.
So it's tracking you?
Yes.
In real time? So is there an app available, like Find My iPhone, Find My Relative that lets you know where the person is or only when they?
I'll find John.
You know, it's confidentiality to that information, and it only stores it for a short period of time. So you can't go, you know, a week or two weeks later and see where John really went in France.
Right, right, okay.
Close one.
Any other questions?
Thank you, ladies. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item?
Staff questions?
Next item, please.
Next is item 25, an agreement between the city and Community Crops to operate an urban garden at the west end of Peter Pan Park, generally located between 30th and 32nd Street and Apple and W Streets for a four-year term.
Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos from the Lincoln Parks and Recreation Department. This is a four-year agreement between the city and Community Crops to operate an urban garden at the west end of Peter Pan Park. Put the map up here. So it's in the location here at the west end of the park. In, I guess, one of the strategies that was included in the new comprehensive plan was to support community gardens and appropriate parks and public places, and to develop some standards and procedures for these kind of approaches. And we followed up in that on January, in January of 2013, we adopted some standards for urban gardens and public parks with some guidelines to address the site selection, how they would be managed, and the managing organization, some of the garden and gardening practices, and then a process for both approval and then a process, if necessary, for abandonment and decommission. And following the adoption of those standards, the first applicant that we had for an urban garden in a public park was Community Crops. And in 2014, they were approved for this 6,000-square-foot garden. It's really an underutilized or what had been underutilized portion of Peter Pan Park, which really fits the standards that we had laid out. As you probably know, they have had tremendous success in the community, number of different community gardens, and they've had a very successful first year. Ben McShane-Jewell and some others from Community Crops are here, and I'll let them talk a little bit about that with you. The policy talks about initially approving gardens only for a one-year period, and then if they're successful and the managing organization has demonstrated success, for consideration for a multi-year agreement. And so that's what you have before you today. And I'm available to answer any questions. I think we also have Chris Myers here from our Northeast District Superintendent.
Questions?
Carl, thank you. Nicole, this park obviously is, has been a, a challenge. And, and just a little over a year ago, there was a, a death in the park, and a week ago, almost a very serious incident there as well. And quite on point here, but can you tell us a little bit about this and other things that are being done to, to help make the park more used and?
Let me talk a little bit about the garden, and if Chris would come up, if he is here, I'll let him talk about some of the other lighting improvements we've made.
Thank you.
I mean, I think overall, we view the garden as a really positive impact in that regard. There are more neighborhood eyes on the garden and much more participation in the neighborhood and use of the park in that way. And so I think we feel like it's been a positive impact in that regard. We've made some other improvements to the park for lighting, and maybe Chris can talk about some of those.
As you know, City Impact is working on?
Chris, just for the record, please.
I'm Chris Myers, Lincoln Northeast District Supervisor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. City Impact is in the process of completing their building that's just to the north of the park there. And with them and Community Crops, we feel that we have a, a good team in place to help encourage positive activities in the park and in the neighborhood. And hopefully, with them on board, we'll be able to turn things around, to have that set of eyes, that, that goal, their mission for both of those institutions would be a great benefit for that area. It's been a tough year in that neighborhood. It's, it's a tough neighborhood. I'll, I'll grant you that. It's, uh, it's nice to see the positive things that are going on in the neighborhood. And it's, uh, it's really great to have Community Crops on board because they're doing a really nice job over there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Well, cer- certainly, taking all of the old warehouses out of there and putting in the row housing, and so that certainly leaves a lot more eyes and a lot more people who are there in very, very close proximity to the park to use the park, so. Lauren.
One of the concerns we have as a council is paying for parks maintenance. As I understand it, through this arrangement, our community partners take on that responsibility, and the Parks Department does not have to make any improvements to the area in order to support the development of the urban gardens. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's exactly right. The, the managing organization, in this case, Community Crops, takes full responsibility for all of the maintenance of the garden. They post a bond in case the garden would need to be decommissioned at some point if it were abandoned. They also provide insurance, full coverage insurance, up to a million dollars liability for the garden and its work. So they take care of it. And again, since it's in an area that was already underutilized within the park, we have the multiple benefits of not only that, that maintenance, that much more intensive use and neighborhood use of the park, but also additionally, that, that participation and sort of eyes on the park that we've talked about.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Thanks for what you do, Chris. I appreciate it. Any other questions? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Well, I think we, yeah.
If you'd like to speak, come on down front, so we, you know, you're coming.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Benjamin McShane-Jewell. I work for Community Crops. I'm the program manager for the community garden program. Just wanted to provide, provide a few additional details to what Nicole and Chris just stated and echo what they've said. We've been around for 11 years. We have about a dozen community gardens around town, and the one in Peter Pan Park is a particularly exciting one for us. We've been looking for opportunities to work with the city more closely, and the partnership with Parks and Rec has been a great one for us and we hope for the community as a whole. The, to get this started, we, we started with meetings with the community, with the Clinton and Hartley Neighborhood Association, and really found that the Peter Pan Park was a great opportunity for what we do. It's a very diverse community ethnically and economically, and we had a really diverse group of gardeners with us in this first year and felt like we had a really great, successful first year. We had 35 families with us at, at that particular garden this year, representing about 115 people across all those households. We had people from Iraq, Iran, Cameroon, all over in Mexico and, and different parts of the world. And it was really a rewarding first year for us, and we hope this is the first of, of many future spots on, in city parks and other public lands. We did find that, that neighbors spoke to us about having more involvement in the park and that being a really important aspect of what we did. We had three residents from those new row, row houses there on the north side of the house who gardened with us in addition to some folks right there on the south side. So we had people right there who could walk right to the garden, could spend a lot of time there and keep their eyes and, on the, on the space and hopefully make that a more, more safe environment for everybody in the community. We had a lot of volunteers who spent a good amount of time providing educational opportunities and growing food for donation to the St. Andrews Society, a gleaning organization. We donated about 200 pounds of fresh produce to charitable organizations just from this first year in the garden. So thank you for your time and just, I hope this is, uh, something we can push for in the future to add, add additional spots. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Please come down.
Hi, my name's Catherine Schiffler. I live at 3138 U Street in the Peter Pan Park neighborhood, and I just want to, I don't want to be too repetitive of what Ben just said, but I'm one of the site coordinators of the Peter Pan Park Garden, and part of a, a, a special part of this garden is the community plot that we operate, which is 1,600 square feet, in which we grow vegetables for the community. As Ben said, we donate hundreds of pounds of produce through Saint, the Society of St. Andrews, and that food goes directly to the food net. In the community plot, we grew sweet potatoes, kale, chard, tomatoes, basil, peppers, okra, broccoli, beets, carrots, and flowers. And we ended up giving a lot of that away to the people who garden at Peter Pan Park and anybody in the neighborhood who is around and interested in eating fresh vegetables as well as the food net through our distribution via the Society of St. Andrews.
Any questions?
Yes. Carl, thank you. What do you do about water?
Uh, we have a fantastic water system. I can't tell you the details. These people probably can. There were pumps installed. The city installed the pumps, I believe.
I think you guys paid for part of it?
Yes.
Cole, you want to talk about the pumps real quick?
When we initially entered into the first-year agreement with Community Crops, that agreement identified what was estimated to be the cost of a water line, and they were committed to pay for that cost or alternatively to pledge that, that amount toward a water well if the city decided to install one. And we did for the benefit of future irrigation in the ball field. So they committed what they would have had to pay to install a water line toward that well, and that's what provides water for the garden.
Very cool. Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody else like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 26, amending Section 2, Article 4 of the bylaws of the City of Lincoln Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council relating to appointments to fill vacancies to the Veterans Memorial Garden Council.
Hello, Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. This is the third part of our annual code cleanup. The Advisory Council came to us and said, rather than being forced to submit names, they wanted to change their bylaws so that the mayor would make the appointments. This change does not prevent them from submitting names to the mayor, does not prevent the council from submitting names for appointment to the Advisory Council. It just does not say that they have to. It's a relatively small code cleanup.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
That would conclude our public hearing portion. We can move into the voting session.
Let's do.
Hearing ordinance's second reading were items 14 through 18. Public hearing resolutions, item 19, public hearing inaction was continued to December 15. Item 20 is Comp Plan Amendment 14005 for the South Salt Creek Watershed Master Plan, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion, call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 21 is Comp Plan Amendment 14006 for the Haynes Branch Watershed Master Plan, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion, call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 22 is Comp Plan Amendment 14007, Middle Creek Watershed Master Plan, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 23 is amending the Lincoln Lancaster County air pollution control regulations and standards to assure consistency with federal and state air quality regulations, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion, call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 24, approving a contract agreement with, between Aging Partners and Phillips Lifeline for monitoring services and equipment purchase for a three-year term with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. I would just say that we, we joked about this a little bit, but the truth is, it's just a very vital program for a lot of elderly people who, and this will certainly give them even more opportunities to get out of the house and, and be mobile and still be within reach of, of safety if they need it, so. Call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 25 is approving an agreement between the city and Community Crops to operate an urban garden at the west end of Peter Pan Park, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion.
I'd just like to say that you think we all recognize the value of parks for recreation and for exercise and play with children, but this is just another way that they enhance the quality of life in our community, and this kind of partnership with a group like Community Crops is really valuable. We're seeing it helping not only the people who are gardening, but the people that they're feeding through their donated excess crops. Really pleased to see this item, see that we can support a multi-year agreement with Community Crops.
Any other, any other comments? I, I'd also say, I think it shows that the Parks Department is utilizing land that, in a lot of cases, is not usable for other things, and actually, there's little return on it,[1764.83] so that's a plus for everybody, so. Call a roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 26, amending Section 2, Article 4 of the bylaws of the City of Lincoln Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion. Call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's third reading, item 27, is approving amendments to lease arrangements related to the Public Building Commission facilities among the city, county, and public building commission, and the issuance of the building commission's tax-supported lease rental revenue refunding bonds to refund its tax-supported lease rental bonds, Series 2004, and its tax-supported lease rental revenue bonds, Series 2005, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion.
Well, they're not here today, but I think it's worth thanking our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, as well as Steve Hubka and the Finance Department for this, because it's obviously very important that we manage and invest taxpayer dollars wisely, and this is something that we're able to do with this refinancing package to the tune of about $2.1 million in savings, so really pleased with their work.
Any other comments? Also gives us one more chance to thank Lauren Wismer for all of his fine service to the city now that he's going to move on to other things. Call a roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 28 is Text Amendment 14010, amending Chapter 2623 of the Lincoln Municipal Code regarding various development standards, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Carl. Discussion. Call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Emery? Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 29, Text Amendment 14011, amending Section 2772180 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to exceptions to height and lot regulations, to revise the minimum separation between buildings and pedestrian way easements from 10 feet to 12.5 feet from the centerline of the easement, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Carl. Discussion. Larian?
I, I just wanted to say, I think these are really sensible, pragmatic revisions, both this amendment and the one we just voted on. They're based on real-life experiences in our neighborhoods. The changes will make life easier for the property owners, they'll simplify for developers how to measure block length, and ultimately, they move us closer to our goal of, of having our neighborhoods be walkable and enjoyable for all our residents, so I'm happy to support these amendments.
Okay, Carl.
Yeah, the, several months ago, we had an issue on this subject that came to us in Northwest Lincoln. It was referred to as the cattle chute, where there were the tall fences just lining this, this sidewalk. And, and it was a conflict. It was a conflict between the property owners immediately adjacent to the cattle chute versus other landowners in the area that liked the convenience of being able to go back and forth, so it was just, it was a problem that kind of pitted neighbors against neighbors. And being able to resolve this issue, have it work in a way that's, that's better for everybody, helps to prevent that kind of conflict, so I'm very appreciative of it. Thank you.
Well, certainly, it was a classic case of, if you were the one that was living, abutting the, the easement, you were not happy.
Right.
But if you were in the neighborhood, you got all the benefits, so this will ease that a little bit. Call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 30 is approving the Ambassador and President II redevelopment agreement between the city and A&amp;P 2 LLC for the renovation of apartment buildings generally located at 14th Street and Lincoln Mall, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
I would note, we do have a motion to amend number one.
Vince got it. Seconded by Roy.
I hereby move to amend Bill Number 14R291, amending-
R94?
94. Is it 94? It says 91 on it. Oh.
294.
14R294?
Well, on the top line, it says 291, so I was just reading that.
Must be a typo.
All right. Basically, it just adds the line and the east half of the vacated north-south alley adjacent there too, in the middle of the section.
Is there a second to the amendment? Seconded by John. Discussion on the amendment? Call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Discussion on the main motion as amended? Call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Emery? Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 31, amending the fiscal year 1314 CIP to authorize and appropriate $414,000 in TIF funds for the Ambassador and President II redevelopment project on property generally located at 14th Street and Lincoln Mall, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
By Carl. Discussion.
Just want to add that it's, these TIF allocations are possible because there's a private investment of $7 million going into this project. It's, it's great to see that kind of private investment being made that will help revitalize this part of our city and also ensure that we have some very much-needed, high-quality, affordable housing.
Questions? Discussion, call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 32, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds with a total not to exceed $414,000 for the City of Lincoln Ambassador and President II redevelopment project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion, call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 33, amending Chapter 10.34 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parking meters by amending Section 1034030 to clarify methods of payment, amending Section 1034070 relating to illegal operation of a parking meter, and amendment, amending Section 1034100 to clarify that coins only shall be collected from parking meters, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion. Call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolution for action only, item 34, is adopting the Lincoln Electric System Annual Budget for 2015 to become effective January 1, 2015, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second. Carl. Discussion. Jonathan?
Just want to thank the, the staff of LES and the LES Board for their hard work on this, and it's always great when they can bring us a budget that doesn't include a rate increase. This is, this went really well, and I, I appreciate their efforts, certainly in a variety of areas. I think they've made some great policy strides in the past couple of years, and, and so I think LES is a well-managed and excellent utility, and we're lucky to have them.
Any other discussion? Well, I'm sure it makes it easier for them to call a bus and tell us that there's no rate increase.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinances, first reading and related resolutions are items 35 through 47. Resolutions on first reading are items 48 through 56. Pending list are items 57 through 61. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since this is an open microphone session.
If you're going to speak, would you come down for us, so we know you're coming this direction? Go ahead. Jane?
Hi, you're invited to a paradise on earth. There are some corrections where roshry, all national magazines are run by foreigners these past couple of years. Fortune magazine for October 27, 2014, that's the 27th day of Mercy Month of Christ on the Earth calendar. It has an article about hundreds of American businessmen in China have been taken to jail. They have been detained without charges. Don't expect due process is stated by foreigner news reporters. Microsoft, McDonald's, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Galaxo Smith-Kline, Abbott Laboratories, and Me Johnson Nutrition have heavy fines and workers put in jail. Don't get two pharmacy pills from Walmart. Chinese put Leti in pills several years ago, and they have made duds. Our leader, Mike Milken, states, replace labor camps with amusement parks in China. Ammonia is, causes polio. The cure is dimethylsofoxide, right on the leg. Boil pine shavings and use the liquid. Drano and crack cocaine used by moms cause cerebral palsy prenatally. Drano has lye in it, men have to make soap and clean the drains with drano. Only should be used by plumbers, that are males. Rehibno causes autism. The cure for rehibno is baking soda. Will that help an autistic child? The autistic, for autism, use mega calcium and a pinch of clay and juice. Meth causes a tiny child in their offspring. Have magnesium oil and honey to keep the child alive. Cocaine causes Down Syndrome in the child. Pot causes severe dyslexia child of a pot-smoking parent. The cure for Lorenzo oil, you've seen the movie in 1993? The cure might be peanut oil. Mexican immigrant illegal boys are illegal at least five different ways. Mexican teen boys coming to the United States without a visa under 18 years old cannot work full-time because they have to go to school to finish high school, and because it's against the law to work full-time under 18 years old. They have no way of supporting themselves while finish, finishing high school. So they might rob an American to feed themselves. It is illegal to stay in America without parents if under 18 years old. Every nation has a law that says that all parents are responsible for their children until 19 years old. They cannot be allowed to come in the United States. They rode on top of trains. That's illegal also, and we're concerned for their health, that they don't fall off of the trains. Have they held ammo in their pockets? That's six ways illegal. Millions of Soviets and Chinese communists and Muslims are here illegally by an illegal immigrant president originally from South Africa.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Come forward.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one advancing, I'd move for adjournment.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion, call a roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned.